This conference will now be recorded.
It's Tuesday, January 11th. So let's do a call to order. Is there a... Hey, Josh, if I make a mistake, just jump in there and correct me, all right?
Okay.
All right, so this is call to order. Let's do a roll call. Josh, would you do a roll call, please?
Sure. Mary Benton. Floyd Colston. Paisley Howerton. She's here. Brandon Jellings. Ian Coon.
Present.
Kyle Lewis.
Here.
Cody Richardson.
Here.
Joni Spiker. And Tom Wheatley.
Here.
But before we go any further, we need to initiate a sort of roll call. We can just swear in our new members. And I just gave away my copy. Can I read off of yours? Okay, if I could have the three of you stand, and three of you right hand. And repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas. And faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of planning commissioner.
Of planning commissioner.
So help me God. I rat.
I'll sign that quick.
You all can just sign that and get it up to me. We'll keep that for records that we did that. We're ready to move on if you are, Ian.
Okay. At this time, planning commission members are asked to make a declaration of any conflict of interest or of any ex parte or outside communication that might influence their ability to hear all sides on any item on the agenda. So they might make, they might come to a fair decision. Is there any conflict of interest? I'll take that as a no. Okay. Public comments. Persons who wish to address the planning commission regarding items not on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Any presentation is for information purposes only. No action. We take it. Is there any persons who wish to address the planning commission?
Yes, we do have somebody that would like to talk.
Okay. I don't have the camera footage, so I can't see who's talking.
My name is Robert Nicholas. I live in A22 South First. And let's see, on a couple of weeks ago, on a Friday, before the Friday before the first, I was given a citation for noise ordinance. And I've been told by these officers, and generally, there's nothing really specifying any time anything that would cause it to annoy or disturbance. So I'm running a... I've been with this sometimes, and I'm pulling out of it, but I've got copies of this generator that I'm running. It's an ultra quiet DeWalt. And it's, I mean, it runs at 60 decibels. Normal conversations is at 55 to 60 decibels. And this thing's approved for all national parks and state parks everywhere for, you know, 24/7. It doesn't cause a disturbance. But my neighbors, which I have a lot of trouble with, and they're just very younger, and they keep harassing me, and they're using the police and the codes of our city to against me. And so, like I said, I got a citation. I plan on fighting for court. And but for a while last year, it was a matter at 10 o'clock. At 10:01, they called the police. You know, if I had the generator running, you know, which was to, you know, keep warm to power my phone, you know, things that, you know. Not overpowering my whole house. I'm just powering, just trying to survive, you know. And until I get my electric going, which I finally got all the materials to do it, I just need to get it installed. I'm really close. It's all expensive. But let's see. And also I had my neighbors, like I said, they probably called more than 100 times. And I'm not exaggerating when I say that. They've called more than 100 times the police on me the last two years. And like I said, they're using them to harass me is what's going on. And I need to... Hoping that that can be adjusted from the time or something for, or I mean, I can check to be slightly like a meter or something to measure the sound to determine whether it's a noise disturbance or not. Police use their judgment whether it's... I mean, I had it in the garage. You couldn't even hear it when they called the complaint in on me. Just in knowing I had a generator running, they called. And at 5:00 PM, I got a citation. And I had to shut it down. I've not been able to run it since, they said, because if they call again, I'll get more citations. So something definitely needs to be...
Did you get a citation or warning?
I got citations. It's, I'm sorry, it's coming up here in February.
And did they test the decibel level?
No, certainly not.
So I mean, the code, it runs 60 decibels.
Yes. And see, you have your big copies, you're like, I'm gonna pass out here. And it runs at 60 decibels. Just as long as you have a normal conversation. And even the officer that came to, who said he's just following all his duties before sending the code. He even, I said, you gotta admit, man, that's not like a call. He said, it doesn't matter what I think. He's Mexican. I heard his name. I remember.
Well, that's it?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you. Yes. How long have you worked?
How long have you run this setup, just generator only?
I'm sorry?
How long have you run this generator only setup?
On this gen... Let's see. I've been like two years now. I've been, yeah. Like I said, I've been gathering everything to get my, to get my electric back on my house. And, you know, the three on wire, the service disconnect, I have to do a complete upgrade, you know. I mean...
Is there any kind of time estimate, or you think that'd be complete?
Yes, by April, before April, for sure. Yes. Has it already done before?
Need two months.
I'm sorry?
Need two months.
Yes. I just, I'm saving the money right now to hire the electrician to install it. Because I have all the materials to do it. I just need them. Proper guy to do it. If anybody else is...
Sir, I'm having trouble hearing you. What was your name again?
Robert Nicholas.
So can you summarize exactly what's your, what are your requesting from the board here?
Is it something, could be, could there be an amendment to the noise? To this... The noise abatement, an amendment to the noise abatement? That would allow me to be able to... Because right as it stands right now, if I was to buy a home anywhere in Arc City and was working on the roof and turned the generator on it, just because the neighbors didn't like the sound of, no matter what time of day, if they file a complaint and they come, then they'll tell me to shut it down. And if they come back again, then I'll be cited. So that would mean that if I bought a new home, that I just wouldn't be able to work on it if neighbors didn't like any of the noise from construction going on next door.
Well, to me, this sounds like more of a police matter. If you're disturbing your neighbors, they have a right to complain.
Right. But the police are following their job by enforcing, going by what the code, the code says. And they said, and they've all told me that, actually, they steer me this way. They told me to come and speak with you guys. And I would be, I would be willing to listen to you. But we can't deny it. Because you're here to communicate. And as clearly stated, we will take action. I understand. So what you need to do is get on the agenda this, or next month. By then, you may have already had your court date. So there's nothing we can do tonight. If you want to address this with the opinion, get on the agenda for next month. We've got two kids at home. And I think we're really, this is...
The government is not a...
I'll say it sometime. This is, if we did something tonight, somebody downtown might be on our tail for doing something tonight when we literally can't.
Ultimately, too, this is actually a matter of the city commission. This board can certainly address it, make recommendations. It's a little outside of Peru for this board.
Peru has changed.
We... Yeah, it's not really a zoning, it's not in zoning. It's a municipal code. That doesn't mean the board can't agree with nature, though.
Thank you, Josh. There's one other thing I'd like to address is next door. Of course, while they were complaining about my 60-decibel generator, he has a semi with a full trailer loaded. And the street is zoned for light commercial use. Okay? But a semi trailer, semi with a truck and trailer is not light commercial. That is heavy duty. It's tore up the road. There's a big divot right there in the street on the west side of the road at First Street. We've already had, the city's already had to replace that curb where, when he takes that turn in the morning, he hops that curb and it's destroyed the, right there where the drainage is, you know, from the street. And he blocks railroad crossing sign and with the waiting sign for the bridge. But I'm told that there's no law that says you can't block the railroad crossing sign or the waiting sign.
I hope our city residents to be good neighbors to each other.
I just...
You just don't have a good neighbor. But that's purely a civil matter. And we don't have jurisdiction as a matter. Civil matter with the semi? This is not a law enforcement. This is like, this is a committee that establishes code, code regulations. So if it's a, you think that he's violating civil laws, you have to say right to call the police department to come down. And I will complain. I get nowhere with it.
This is Paisley Howerton. I just want to recap real quick. So you have a residence that you are working on, and you have to run this generator. Is this a necessity?
Yes, it is.
But it's no, not much louder than the decibel of regular speaking?
That's correct. It's, it runs at 60 decibels.
Okay. And I'm assuming, is this like a necessity for your utilities?
Not for all my utilities, no. But I do, yes, I do. While I'm working on the home, I do have a small heater for my, for one room.
Okay.
And for lighting. And to charge my phones. That's it. That's all I'm... I'm not powering up a refrigerator. I'm working out of a coon right now, so. And I hope every now and then I can go use my hot plate to cook a meal. Right now, I'm cooking on the wood burning stove. Learned a lot about how to do that, surviving. It's just rough.
I think this is some, something we should look into a little further, like Lloyd said, at a later, later meeting. Can I get a motion to table this? Can we get some recommendations from the staff?
I don't think a motion's necessary because we can't take any action. Yeah, we can just move on. Thank you.
Move on then.
Thank you very much for that.
Okay. It's consent agenda, the meeting minutes. Does everyone agree with the meeting minutes as written?
Moving.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
Move. We approve.
All right. Meeting minutes from December 14th, 2021 have been approved. Next thing is the consideration to elect a chair and a vice chair for 2022. As the vice chair, I volunteered for the chair. We do have a vacancy for the vice chair. Do we have any volunteers or...
We do need to have official motion on that even, too.
Okay. A motion on the...
On myself? Yep.
Okay.
If you don't want to make that, somebody else can do that.
Okay. Does anybody want a motion to nominate me for chair?
I move that we nominate Ian for the chair.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion is in pass. Nominate Ian Coon as the chair. So moving on to the... Josh, I knew we had to vote on that. I was just skip past it to pick the vice chair. Anyways, so on the vice chair, do we have any volunteers? Or do we have, do we have a motion to nominate a vice chair?
I'll be your vice chair. We can just pick names out of a hat.
Somebody's got to volunteer.
Tom's willing to be the vice chair.
Who?
Tom Wheatley.
I'm having trouble hearing you. So I motion make Lloyd Colston the vice chair.
I'll align that motion. Thank you.
Okay.
You already have a volunteer willing to do it. Let's let it.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that. Who's the volunteer? I'm having a hard time hearing.
Tom Wheatley is our volunteer.
Okay. Can I get a motion to nominate Tom as the vice chair?
Second.
Okay. Tom has been voted in as the vice chair. Congratulations, Tom. So just move. Is there anything else we need to discuss, Josh, or can we move on?
I would just say that we will also have to do this for the board of zoning appeals, but I didn't want to have a board of zoning appeals meeting just to do that. So let's put that off until we actually have to have one of those meetings, which is a little awkward because we don't have a chair. We'll deal with that on time, perhaps.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Let's move on to the public hearings. Can I hand that over to you, Josh?
Yep.
Okay. I'm sorry, everyone. I know this is a little awkward. I promise the next one will be smoother. Thank you for bearing with me.
Do you have a motion to open the public hearing, though? Somebody? I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second on that?
Certainly. Put my favor of that motion?
Aye.
I'll bet since he's not here. Okay. This property, 600 South B. We do have some representatives from the school district and from the health center that we need to ask them questions later on. We can do that. So I wanted to acknowledge that. Their request tonight before you is to rezone from a P public use district to a C1 office and service business district. Part of the issue here is that it was zoned public because the school district owned this building. And in fact, it was still functioning as a school facility within the plan. But since this is not a public use that's being proposed, it's not a public entity. It needs to be rezoned to a commercial purpose. So again, the property is at 600 South B. The surrounding area is commercial and residential. There is a vacant commercial site that's northwest of the property. And residential is immediately surrounding it, pretty much on all four sides. It is just dry, an acre. It's basically a half a city block. And again, the project is to develop a medical clinic. If that's the Cali... Dave, you can correct me if I call it wrong, but it's the Community Health Center in Cali County, I believe is the correct term for that. They are wanting to put the clinic in there. They have actually come to an agreement with the school district to purchase that building from, from the school district. But there is something in their contract that's contingent on this rezone being approved. So the property history, this has been the site of a school since, as far as I can tell, clear back into the 1800s. 1886 is, I believe, when that building was first built, the original building. The current building, initially, I thought it was 1910 because that's what the county records said. But doing a little research, reaching out to the Facebook group entries of Arc City, and that's where I got that picture that we started with, too. It was built probably more like 1931. Lincoln School, after stopping elementary school, was home to Head Start and their house program for a while, or early education. But in 2016, the school district made the decision to move those services to each of the elementary schools. And so that made this building vacant from that point on. I initially put down 2017 when I was starting my research, but then I talked to Mr. Foman still, and we determined that it was actually 2016 when it happened. But there hasn't been any other land use cases on this property. And it's been a school since the beginning of Arc City, actually. So it's always been that use. As far as the comprehensive plan is concerned, there is a goal that's related to the promotion of access to healthcare that I feel that this meets really well. The future land use map again shows this as a public use because, again, it was school district. Can you scroll down? There we go. So this is the future land use map that it decides that it wants to load. But again, when the plan was written, the facility was still part of the school district. So that was acceptable to have as a public use. The other thing about this is it is a low-income medical facility. So it should help residents in the city that do not have access to healthcare. This should help them have another opportunity to do that and not have to use the emergency. So that's a, that's a plus there. There actually is a clinic already in Windville. And they have decided that they want to expand down to Arc City. And the other nice thing about this is there, I checked the apps and everything, and I determined that there is no health facility south of about Vine Avenue. And so the south...
South of what? Sorry.
So the south part of our community is not served by medical facilities at all, that I would determine. So I think that will be good for that, too. It'll give a place for people even walk to that live on the south part of town. As far as zoning is concerned, the area is, again, predominantly residential, except for along Madison. The first property that have, or all of the properties really, that have frontage along Madison, pretty much from the railroad track all the way west to the river. That first tier is often commercial. That's pretty common. So I don't think that's going to be an issue with this. But when it comes down to... Oh, yeah. Okay, that's the zoning map for this area. But I believe that the zoning is consistent, this change. So this is the school today. A little bit clearer than the word picture you started with. It takes up that whole block. This is looking south along, actually, I don't trip. This is looking south along B Street. That's the playground for the school. It is a predominantly residential neighborhood, with the exception of the old school building. Off to the north, it's still residential. It is commercial again along Madison. And we have traffic signal there stuffed over from the time when that's a school. This is a commercial area to the northwest. This, this used to be a commercial site. I think it was a gas station at one time. Sheldon's Services right across the street. And then there's a repair shop that's on down. I think the beauty parlor is right there, too. So as far as recommendations from staff, I do recommend that you approve this. It is compatible with the area. It's not going to be really probably any more heavy use than the school was. It might be less, quite frankly. The building has been vacant since 2016. So it's just been kind of sitting there. The school district, I don't really know what they're going to do with it if this doesn't happen. The use is similar, like I said, in intensity to what the school, and like I said, maybe even a little less. It shouldn't adversely affect the neighboring properties too much. It does promote that affordable healthcare option to many residents that may not have that. And for that reason, the public health of the community should be served well. But as well, the safety and general welfare should not be negatively impacted. So that's my official recommendation.
Josh, I have a question. Is this, is this a daytime clinic? Or is this going to be a 24-hour emergency care type situation?
Mr. Bravo, can you answer that?
Sure. Trying to come on camera here. It'll be Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Basically daytime hours. We have considered doing some extended hours into the evenings or Saturday with the, the other clinic. But it's a primary care clinic and not an urgent care facility. So it'd be very much like your traditional doctor's office.
I'm sorry, whoever I interrupted there.
No problem. I had a question. I understand it's been vacant for over five years. From last, I mean, last month's meeting minutes. Anyway, the point is, always with rezoning, neighbors have always had a chance to weigh in because parking always comes up every bit of it. So is there enough room on a property if there are not adequate parking stalls without using the street where we'll have someone else come in like this gentleman, the neighbors next year, like no park?
Is that all the street parking there? Is there, I can't remember if there's a parking lot or not.
There, there is a parking lot, basically the northwest corner, that would accommodate a number of vehicles. Longer term, we would probably take down the fencing and expand that parking lot. I think we're compliant with zoning for the parking spaces. But the front entrance way does go out to the street. And they're potentially on the, the east side of B Street could be folks parking there.
I understand that there's parking for teachers in the path, so there's already some room for it. I just didn't know how a very useful clinic would be, at least double that parking, is all I thought. That's all I had. I'm just curious.
I would estimate there's more than 20 parking spaces available there on how you organize the lines. You know, we are looking at establishing a primary care clinic. We're integrated, so we have behavioral healthcare services and oral healthcare service with approximately 11,000 square feet. Essentially, the north half of the building would be exam rooms, 10. Uh, the, essentially the north half of the building would be, um, exam rooms, uh, ten. And then, uh, we would look to longer term establish a, a dental clinic and, and potentially a small, uh, direct, uh, pharmacy, given the number of staff that are in, the number of patients per rooms. Uh, most of the parking could be onsite, although I do, I do think with the, the way the access set up east side of B Street would get utilized.
Okay, thank you.
Josh, is this a tax pay entity?
I don't believe it's. You're, you're nonprofit, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're five oh one C three.
How many medical staff do you anticipate having onsite as far as doctors or physicians on the scene?
Initially, and we've secured funding to remodel, uh, one half of the building. And so it would be a, a slow growth into the additional services. You know, once it's, uh, fully remodeled, uh, we'd probably be talking about, uh, twenty staff members.
I forget the number. Twenty, twenty.
I think, um, access to medical clinics is important to a community. I see that parking might possibly be an issue in the future. Any other members have comments? Sorry, go ahead.
Well, one of the things about the existing parking is if you look at where it's fenced off, um, there's room to expand that out for, uh, additional parking long term into the, into the growth. I think the vast majority of parking can be onsite.
Yeah, I agree. Um, do we have a motion to approve the rezoning for the medical clinic? I'm sorry, what was that?
Do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Okay. Any seconds on that?
Second.
And now can we have the motion to approve? I'll make mistakes here, Josh, just let me know.
You're, you're actually fine.
Okay.
To approve this. Do we have a motion and a second? We need to do.
Got a vote on this?
Yeah, we need to do this by all.
Okay.
I will do that. Mary Bennet?
Yes.
Lloyd Colston?
Yes.
Paisley Howerton?
Yes.
Brendan Jellings?
No.
Ian Coon?
Yes.
Kyle Lewis?
Yes.
Cody Richardson?
Yes.
Joni Pyther?
Yes.
And Tom Wheatley?
Yes.
Okay, that leaves us with eight to one in favor of approval.
Will the commission look at this, Josh, as well?
Yes, what will happen now is it will go, the recommendation from this board will go before the city commission. I'm planning on February the first, um, to take it before them for their.
All right, sounds good. Yes, we can move on, is that correct?
Yep.
All right, so we're moving on to the comprehensive plan. There'll be some discussions here. Josh, can you take it from here?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, sure. At the meeting last month, we kind of started to delve into land use. And what I did, what I brought back to you and put in the packet, uh, was a little bit of editing that we did based on what we talked about. And for the sake of our new members, I'm kind of going to go back over just a little bit of that. We won't spend a lot of time on this part, but I do want to spend a little bit of time. Really, the first, the introduction and the, uh, vision, I don't anticipate us needing to change. And we kind of talked about that last month, not needing to change. Hey, Josh, I didn't bring any copies of the chapter eight, and I apologize.
Hey, with, with all the members, could you just kind of start at a high level of the master plan?
Yeah, oh yeah, I only should do that too.
Yeah, I guess what we've, what we've done and what's left, I guess.
Yeah.
Give it for me.
We have been working on this plan since the end of twenty twenty. Um, COVID kind of threw us for a loop and has caused lots of delays in this process. But basically, the comprehensive plan is a document that, ultimately, it helps the city commission decide how to fund projects in the state. Uh, we've covered topics from healthcare, uh, we talked about infrastructure, uh, natural resources, historic district. We talked about all those things. Uh, we spent a lot of time on housing. We, in fact, as part of the process, kind of in the middle of this, we applied for a housing grant. And one of the things that we did was we had, what the heck was that called? Anyways, we had a, we had a meeting where we brought in the public and, uh, them about the housing issues that they were facing. We also sent out questionnaires to citizens to help determine exactly what kind of housing we were needing. And we looked at, um, some past housing plans too, as part of that process, to learn just a little bit more about what that funds had requested. And, uh, as part of that plan, we came up with some recommendations about what kind of housing we need to look at. It was kind of a mixed bag. Uh, the main thing that we discovered was we need more housing. We have been working on that in the city to get a little bit more housing in the city. In fact, one of our new planning commissioners has been working on a project to help with that. We have some more pipeline for housing as well. It's just a, it's a slow process to get going, Brandon can test you. As to how, how much detail goes into developing housing. Uh, but it's something that, that we spent a lot of time on and we will come back to it. Um, before we have a public hearing for the, for the planning commission. But our main discussion, we've already taken care of. We'll have to talk about some goals that we still need to, to meet. And I will get, I will get the chapters to our new members too. I apologize, I don't know what I was thinking about tonight. I didn't bring this chapter either. Um, another topic that we discussed was economic development. And of course, that has to do with what the city can do to encourage new business, new industry to come to town. We had a pretty good discussion on that as well, about what we could do to encourage more business. The city has, uh, a relationship with a consultant that's working on, drumming up retail uh, for the city who's been working on that for a little over a year, I think now. Again, a slow process. It's not really easy to attract retail. We are a little bit smaller town, we're on the interstate. So it, it takes a little bit of effort, it takes a lot of time. Sometimes, probably just like Lloyd said earlier, government moves at a very slow pace. But it is, it's happening. We have some things on the work. Certainly, we have, big industry is expanding. Both Campack and Creekstone have been expanding about as fast as we can keep up with them. Um, at last count, I believe that Creekstone was up over eleven hundred employees and still growing. Uh, Campack is definitely farther behind and I can't remember what their number was, but, uh, they are also growing and trying to expand wherever they can. They're running out of room down here now. So that's why they built their warehouse site up north. Um, see, what else did we talk about?
Talked about emergency services briefly.
We did. We talked about what that would mean for the city and what would be required. Didn't have as much discussion as I had hoped on that topic. We weren't able to get the, uh, police department to a meeting or the fire department, so we didn't get to talk about that a lot. I know that they still have needs, though, um, as the city expands, certainly we have more and more issues with needing additional protection there. I don't think that they have any serious issues that need to be addressed, but there will probably be recommendations in the plan on how to support those two departments. Another thing that we talked about at length was streets, transportation system. Of course, may be familiar with Amtrak is trying to, not Amtrak, that, there's a group that's trying to get Amtrak to help expand passenger rail to bring it back to Arc City. Creating a route from Oklahoma City all the way up to Newton. And it would have stops in Arkansas City and it would have stop in Wichita as well. And probably some in Oklahoma as well. But they're trying to develop that system. We talked about the streets a little bit, about what, what it takes to fund the streets. And sadly, we do not have a dedicated funding source for streets. Probably going to have to look at another sales tax in order to move forward. Uh, the good news is, I think this may even happen since we talked about it in a meeting. So we did receive a grant, uh, from KDOT and a CDBG grant from the federal government for some street between radio lane and Kansas State. So we have the funding to finally get that resurfaced. It's in pretty good shape, but finally we do have a way to do that section of road. But when it comes to the other roads in the city, about all that we have dedicated funding for is basic maintenance. So patchy potholes, uh, that sort of thing. When it comes to milling overlays, you don't have a whole lot more options. Other than grants, and it's difficult to come by, that's a really limited thing. Sales taxes probably was going to take to, uh, do that for. We did that back in two thousand eight, I believe it was. And we got a number of streets that were repaired, it was already in the process. Fortunately, some of those already getting to the point where they needed, yeah. So it's kind of a never ending process. I'm sure that, uh, Mayor can attest to how difficult it is to try to find ways to fund streets. The other thing that, and I, I briefly said this, infrastructure. We did have a good meeting where we talked about the water and the sewer system. Um, of course, we're sitting in a, almost brand new, it's, it's starting to get up with the age now, uh, facility for water. So took care of that number of years ago to, to enhance that system. We still need to do a lot of work on the water lines. That's, that's the never ending issue too. Some of that can be done through the, through the water fund. Again, slowly being done. The most recent one was done in the Brent Lake neighborhood and up into the Highland Drive area. Looking at a, start a new project at some point in the future. I don't know exactly where we're going to do that yet. It's something that we'll, we'll have to be looking at. On the sewer side, um, same thing. We've got to do a lot of work on the, um, collection pipes, sewer pipes in the city. This, again, sewer fund from user fees helps with that. But projects are expensive and they're hard to come together. We're working most recently on a project in the downtown area that would, uh, help the downtown businesses, because we've had a lot of problems with collapses and stuff in the downtown area. So that's the most recent project that's going to be coming up pretty soon. Um, and also the sewer plant. The federal government likes to give us mandates without giving us funding to deal with the mandates. Um, but right now, we are currently working on a project to do some upgrades that are required for our next permitting cycle. Some of that's, well, most of it is through, you probably are aware of this, if you live in the city. Um, we are, we've increased the sewer rates in order to help pay for the current project. So that, the good thing about water and sewer is there is a funding mechanism that we have in place that will help give a dedicated funding stream to, to help take care of that. And then I think I've pretty much covered all the topics except this one. Land use is the last one, and we kind of put that at the end of the comprehensive plan on purpose. Because it covers all of the other topics, extent to an extent. And part of that is our growth. When it comes down to growth, we have to know where our current infrastructure is. We don't want to just keep building out if we can't afford to build an infrastructure. We're, I just talked about how it's difficult to find funding for our infrastructure. And so it's important when we develop a land use plan that we look at at how we're doing that, to make sure that new development doesn't create new costs. We, we've done some, um, some of that in the past, like the case of Compass Point. That would have helped because we had a grant that helped assist with that, that helped pay for a lot of the cost of that. The city did take on some of the funding of that as well. We had to, we did have to extend a sewer line up to it to help serve that development. That has been taken care of, the funding for that has been placed. But at the same time, we have to be careful when due development like that on the outside of the city. We've got to make sure that we have the, the infrastructure there. Uh, we have the possibility of adding some additional housing in that general area. Um, that's actually in good position now because the sewer line was extended. The water will have to keep working on to get it extended a little further. The other utilities, they kind of work with us. They've actually been pretty good recently about working with us to expand their networks as well. A lot of times, uh, they will actually pay for themselves because they realize that they will get new users that will be paying into their system. Uh, sometimes electric gets a little expensive and so sometimes they need us to, they, they work for assistance as well, but the others, like your telephone and your cable, they're, they pretty much just want you to, to build. They're just happy with additional subscribers. But anyways, that's, that's kind of where we're at. I know that was a really, really fast way of introducing what, what the comprehensive plan is. Uh, but essentially, the idea is that we use a comprehensive plan to make decisions for the future. And we want to use this plan to go out about five, maybe on the upper end ten years. And we make funding decisions based on that. We have a capital improvement plan committee that meets yearly, it didn't meet last year because COVID. Um, but we generally will come up with a citizen committee that will use, partially use the comprehensive plan to make their decisions on what to recommend to the city commission to fund each, each year. And they have a rolling schedule that, that kind of prioritizes projects. Of course, it's just like with anything, y'all have your own budgets. Sometimes the plan doesn't work. Sometimes we just don't have the funding for it, or sometimes something else happens that, that totally changes what it is that we're looking for. And that's part of the reason why we have to redo this plan every so often. We, we did this plan last time in two thousand thirteen, adopted it in two thousand fourteen. And it's, it's got some issues. It's got some, some areas that have become out of date. And, and as we were discussing throughout our development so far, a lot of the goals that were set in this plan, um, aren't measurable. It's difficult to know when we've met them. And so part of the idea that we've kind of come up with as the planning commission is to make the goals in the new plan to be something that we can measure. So something that we can look at in two to three years and see if we're meeting those. We kind of have looked at some other ones. We kind of looked at some other ones. We really loved, I don't speak for everybody in this show. I really love, let me put it that way. The way that Winfield did their parks plan, where they had it set up. They had ongoing goal or projects at short term, they had medium term, they had long term. And so don't want to just copy what they did. But we want to kind of follow the model of doing the same thing. We come up with goals that we can look at, short term, for a couple of years, see if it's actually getting done. But then look at the medium ones, make sure they're actually showing up in the capital improvement, the CIP. And the ones on the long term is the ones that are gonna change all the time. Because we, when we set long term goals, we don't know what the future holds. We don't know what's gonna happen. We don't know, I hate to even say this out loud, we don't know if Creekstone decides that they don't want a beer. That would drastically change what we do as a city. Just as an example, because I don't want that to happen. But we have a pretty good employment base now, as we stated. So I'm not terribly worried about that. Creekstone has privately indicated they don't really want to work. Economy changes, sometimes they can't control, we can't control what happens at the national or really in the case of Creekstone, global scale. So if market changes, we don't know, we can't predict that. So that's why we want to redo this plan every so often so that we don't get outdated. It actually still means something. So many times before we did this plan, I would come to this commission with a rezon request. And I would have to say that the plan for this area is out of date. Because it doesn't mean what, uh, what's happened, what we thought would happen to that. And so we try to do this plan on a regular basis so that we don't run into that. We don't, and I don't have to say that to you when we come, that future land use map doesn't match this because it's out of date. We don't want to get to that point. So that's what this is about. And so kind of bringing that all back to where we are today. We met last month to talk about land use. Got some pretty good detail. In fact, there was an article in the newspaper today. If you didn't see it, you might try to check it out. It, you actually quoted Lloyd quite a bit. I don't know that he anticipated that happening. But it, it did talk about a little bit of what we did. I think most of it was both from minutes from last meeting. Anyway, what I did was I looked at what we talked about at the last meeting and I tried to put it into the documents, cleaned it up a little bit. So what I was gonna start with, we just kind of go through each of the sections. Not in great detail because I don't want to be here all night. I'm sure you guys don't either. And we did talk about it a little bit last, last month as well. So like I said, the introduction, I didn't make any changes to because we really didn't decide to do anything. Same thing with the vision. But this next section, this past comprehensive plans, um, section, I did want to change. And we talked about this in great detail. Past plans, this section had kind of regurgitated what was in the past plans. And sadly, it was, it had a lot of goals and it just kept getting put into it over and over and over again that were not getting met. Clear back in 1996, some of these goals were still in there. And so what I suggested, and what we kind of talked about last month was to, instead of putting past goals, like excerpts from the old plans, we were gonna summarize it. And so what I attempted to do in the copy that I put in the packet today was to summarize what's happened over the past, well, twenty plus years. It started in 1996. That was the big major revision, uh, that was done. I don't know what it was before that was. It must have been the seventies or something. But that got revised a couple of different times. I think what they were trying to do was get the census information in it. And there was a pretty significant update in 2003, which is really where it picked up on here. But that plan, you know, it was focusing on some of the same stuff that we're focused on today still. You talked about, like it said, downtown remains a focal point. It noted areas of incompatible uses. That was happening then. And so when we were, when we looked at the 2013 plan, we looked at some of those goals. Like we, we still kept some of them in this section. But the 2013 plan was attempting to resolve some of those issues that were coming up in the 2003 plan. Specifically with incompatible uses.
Do you, Josh?
Yeah?
Do you have some kind of explanation of why the past goals were not met or no longer applied? I mean, not tonight, but something written down? Anything that would explain that? I just want to make sure we don't make the same mistakes again.
Absolutely. Well, that's part of the reason that we wanted to find these goals that are in it. That we can actually see that we're doing. And if we ever come to a point, we're supposed to review this every year. If, if we come to the session when we want to review the plan, the goals, and we discover that there's no way we're gonna be the goal, that's a good time to change it. And what that would be is just a revision amendment to the comprehensive plan. We would have to, of course, have a public hearing and go back before the city commission again. But it would just be that section instead of the entire plan. But that's, that's how I anticipate that we will keep this from happening in the future. Is it's for a regular, like at least once a year, we, we have a meeting where we talk about, we just have a planning session where we, we talk about all the different goals that we set in 2022. And are we, are we meeting these? And if, you know, if we're meeting the goals and the goal no longer applies, then maybe it's time to get rid of the goal. And move on to it. That way, when we come to our revision, probably in about five or six years, we will see where we've been, we'll see what it is that we still need to do. And we'll see maybe some new stuff that we need to work on. So the 2013 plan had kind of various levels of success. We, we have implemented some of the stuff that, that was in that plan. And again, this chapter, like, I, I talked about, I think about the uses because this chapter is focused on that. We did look at that. We, in fact, we redid the zoning regulations for the first time in about fifty years. The, before we did this plan, the last time the, the regulations had been changed was 1964. There had been amendments along the way, of course. We, we had to do some in order to keep up with the times, but not an overhaul. And so in 2014, we overhauled the regulations. Totally threw the 1964 ones out the window, including all the amendments, and started from scratch. Now, that being said, we obviously used some of the old regulations and then, because some of them were fine. But we, we did that. We adopted a new zoning map. We adopt, and of course, we had to adopt a future land use map as part of that process as well. So all of that to say that that's what I did here is try to make an attempt to summarize what those other plans would do. And I don't want to make a decision about whether or not I did a good job on this tonight. That's not what we're trying to do tonight. We, we will do that before we get a public hearing. But I just want to let you know what, what I've been working on. So went through some of the next couple of pages. That's all that is. It's just be pulling out the old stuff, putting the new stuff in. But then we move on to this next section and it talks about what the current, yeah, eight point four. So that talks about what currently is adopted as regulations. And so what I did was scratched out the old one because obviously that was stuff that didn't apply anymore because we'd already adopted it. And what I did instead was use the proposed section and talked about what it is that the new regulations. So I talked about how the, they were gotten until the fourteen. Talked a little bit about what each of the different districts are. And how they were implemented. So really, this is just a summary of what we did in 2014. We also, as part of that process, we also redid the subdivision regulations because they had not been really updated since about the, about 1990 or so. And some of those were getting a little out of date and need to be updated. So we also did, uh, some changes there. I'm losing track of my thought process. Must be getting there. Anyway, that's, that's what that section was. It's, it's designed to summarize what our current regulations are. And the reason we wanted to do that is because we need to know what we already have on the books in order to propose changes. And so the next section, uh, that comes up is the proposals. And that, what I did there, look a couple of pages from here. What I did was over the half, what is it? Almost eight years. We've done a couple of amendments, of course. But I've been keeping notes of what is not working. So there's, we certainly have discovered things that don't work as well as what we hoped. In fact, there's a district, and I started off with this, the countryside district. We don't even use the countryside district. So I think we'll need to talk about why that's not getting used. The main reason it's not used is we did not recommend zoning in the Goher area. And that is where that district would have applied. We still kept it on the books, but again, it was never used. I'm recommending that we get rid of it unless the commission decides that they want to recommend zoning on that city. And we'll, we can talk about that a little later. The other thing we talked about quite a bit at length last month was the mixed use district. We've had some issues, um, on the one on North Summit Street. It extends from, I forget what the street is, probably Pine. And it goes north to Kansas and it's on both sides of the street. And when a specific development went in their family daughter, it created some issues for some of the residents in that area. And sad thing about the mixed use district as it's written is it, it doesn't, it doesn't give enough guidance to me as a zoning administrator. I don't think, just in my opinion, on how to deal with the problems that have come up in that area. The big thing is, for that particular area, is First Street is too narrow. It's had to change. And so I think that we need to look at that district a little more detail because it's, the, the way it's written is just not all we can do. And not only that, it's difficult, but we need to find a balance between the residential uses that are in that area and the commercial uses that are infiltrating the area. I looked back at some of the old records, some old minutes from planning commission meetings and everything. There have been issues on that corridor since the seventies. It happened like when, I mean, RV the third now, but at that time it would have been Sandy's, Hardee's at one point. They had some of the same issues that is happening in that corridor today. They're talking about parking, not having the, parking, circulation, access to First Street. All that stuff was, was coming up. Still haven't figured out a way to deal with it. And I think that we want to, as part of this plan, recommend some things that hopefully will.
And you mentioned First Street. And First Street is just probably more problematic than some of them because it is a problem that getting into and out of the family.
And so what might have to happen is we make recommendations on how to deal with First Street. If there's anything we can do. We can't really widen it because of the way it's helped residents. We could look at little things like, little things. We could look at some things like parking, that sort of stuff. But the problem is if you, if we were to ask the residents not to park on one side of the street, then we're creating a new problem. So, and that's been sort of the arguments back and forth. I know that, uh, Mr. Herrer is actually on this call and he's, he's had some issues. He lives right behind it and has had some issues with the family dog. Just, and it, it may even seem piddly to somebody that doesn't live in the neighborhood, but when you live right next to it, it's a big deal. Trucks come with very salaries of the night. Traffic comes out on First Street, causes problems. We even had some vagrancy issues there with some, with people that were doing inappropriate things on the side of the night. It just attracted, it's just the nature of the commercial development there. And trash, it tends to happen anytime you have a commercial area. Customers don't always properly take care of their own trash. And, and not only that, they have, have trash containers that sometimes give them flow. It's just the nature of commercial district. So that's why we try to keep commercial and commercial areas and we try to keep residential and residential areas. But in an area like this, they, they mix a little bit. Just, just because Summit Street is really a commercial border. Like I said, that's been, that's been for fifty years and that's, that kind of changes, probably going to get worse. Just because commercial businesses want to be where traffic is. And the fact of the matter is, the city started as residential in that area. But Summit Street has got busier and busier over the years. Anyway, that's, that's one of the, the proposals that, that I've put out there is that we take a little bit bigger look, a little bit longer look at the mixed use district. And yes, I know I'm kind of glazing over all of this, but I, I don't want to, I don't want to focus on the details of this. I think that we probably want to focus on details at a different level when we actually bring you a draft. Another section that, that I pointed out in this plan was our overlay districts. We haven't really been using them very much. We developed, and part of this is in response to goals that were in the 2013 plan. We developed a overlay district that would be used for, uh, for housing to try to generate more affordable, it's a district out there. We actually have a district like that at Compass Point still, I think that's that designation. There was also a district for senior housing. We called it the elderly housing overlay district. That has not been used. We have successfully developed a senior housing area that didn't need that because of the way it was developed, so it wasn't applied for. Then we also had a couple of other districts. One was for the college. Part of that because we've seen in some other cities that are college towns, they have special issues when it's related to the campus. Whether that's the campus itself or it's the housing that's immediately around it. And Art City has a little bit of issue with that, with student housing, but it's not really a big deal. Well, what that district was supposed to be for was to help the college develop a master plan. But so far that hasn't happened. They have a master plan, but they have, I don't want to say they implemented it, but they, they haven't used it like to this level. They couldn't do this. If you were to, hate to use a neighboring town, but if you were to look at what Winfield's done, there is a college overlay around Southwest where they have attempted to deal with some of the issues. If you go to a city like Manhattan or Lawrence, they have specialty districts on the front of their campus too. Because again, they have unique things that just can't be dealt with by regular residential or commercial. Because again, they have unique things that just can't be dealt with by regular residential or commercial. Just, just the nature of what's going on at that campus. So that, but that's what the purpose of that was, was to have a district where we could be really flexible with the college. And the development, maybe even the suburbs, maybe different in that area, maybe. If it's a unique form of mixed use, it isn't really covered by our mixed-use district, those kind of things. And the last one, the last one is the historic conservation overlay. And the idea of that primarily was to make sure that our existing historic district showed up on the zoning. It's, it was on the old one, but it really. It wasn't looked at like that. But I thought it was important when we developed the plan to make sure that it's very clear that there is a historic district here. If I could or not, you're going to have to deal with it. And it's just nice to be able to see that on the zoning map. Just the first hand, so you automatically know when you're checking your zoning, oh, this is also a historic district. Beyond that, that district doesn't have any special regulations. Basically, it is just using the standards that were required to follow by the Historic Preservation Act the state has on those. So there's nothing special there. There's, there's no extra regulations that have been added. And so part of what I'm saying is. If we're going to continue that, probably going to want to look at the district a little bit further. This is something that the Historic Preservation Board, get back to that chapter, the chapter five, will talk about that a little bit, what they recommend. There's some places in that district that don't even have buildings on it anymore. Because they were torn down, quite frankly. There's other areas that probably were in the district, but they changed so much that it doesn't fit. And then we've got the buildings that are. That maybe need to be in the street. So we're not in that conversation tonight, of course. But that's the kind of thing we want to look at when we're talking about that overlay district is to make sure that it actually reflects what's going on. Maybe the district needs to be bigger than the actual historic district. And we need a little, I don't know. I'm just throwing all that stuff out. At you because that district doesn't really do anything on its own. Just the mindless. Okay, and beyond the districts. We're going to have to make some amendments to the zoning regulations. Some of it has to do with how it's developed, some of it with the regulations just work the way we thought they would. In some cases, new things have happened. That just, we didn't take into account. We talked a little bit about this last month. How businesses like Amazon are changing retail. And part of the reason that we have. Part of the reason we have a lot of empty storefronts is because we're not able to support them the way we used to because we've gone to. Stuff off Amazon, online sellers. And so that creates a new problem that we're going to have to address in some manner. What I suggested at the last meeting was maybe that means doing stuff that is a little more on the industrial side. Or. Some interesting uses that are kind of mixed, like breweries, for example. Right now, there is no way really in our regulations for somebody to come in that does that craft brewery thing where they. Actually produce their products right there in the business. We don't, we don't have a way for them to do that. We would have to adjust it. Again, I'm using Winfield as an example because they've done it. They had to do some special things in order to get the brewery business that they put in at the north end of town. But it was, it's possible. So we have, we have an example to use for what they did there. But in addition to that, and this is more, I'm reading what's happening in some of the bigger cities, so it may not work here. But a lot of places what's been happening is term, this new term called a dark storefront. And what's actually happening there is. There, it's really just a warehouse. And so what you're doing is you're going in and say you ordered a package of something. You're just going into the front of this business, they're going back to the back room, they're picking up their box, and they're handing in the box. And that is, that is a new thing that we don't even know how to begin to deal with here. Amazon is another thing we don't know how to deal with here because it's not a traditional. Sure, you've seen, you know, we have here, the San Francisco doesn't work that way here. But in a bigger city, they have their own delivery fleet. And in some cases, it may be similar to what Uber does for, it's just. Your neighbor may be an Amazon delivery driver. And so what they're doing is they're just driving to this site, picking up this one little load here and delivering it to the same city. And in cities where they have done that, it's created all sorts of nightmares because the traffic patterns are impossible to determine. They couldn't prepare for it. They didn't have any idea what that was going to be like. They have rush hour around the clock is basically what they're running into immediately or instantly. So I'm not suggesting that that's happening here, because it's not right now, but it is something that this plan may need to look at. Some of the different things that are changing on a global scale, quite frankly, will eventually trickle down to us. And so we need to be prepared. For what that might be. And so that's part of, I'm rambling. But that's part of what I'm talking about when I'm saying we need to change the zoning regulations as a whole. Is we need to look at the individual uses in each district. See if that's still a good use. In some cases, I've noted that we have existing uses that don't quite match up with what our districts where. We have some development patterns that might have slid under the radar, and I realize that's my fault. But it's created some non-conforming uses that. Maybe they're not conforming according to regulations, or they shouldn't be. So we need to make some adjustments to that, too. The other thing that I noticed has become an issue is, for whatever reason, and I don't even remember what happened. We put our site plan review regulations in the subdivision regulations. So when a new business is coming into town. And they look at our zoning regulations, because believe it or not. Developers do read our regulations when they, when they first start a project, because they want to know before they even talk to me. If the city is friendly to whatever it is that they're wanting to do. And the problem I've discovered is because those regulations are wholly different documents that they're not dealing with, because maybe they don't need to do any planning. They don't see it. And so what I'm going to propose, when we get to this process, is move those back into zoning regulations so they see it right up front, what it is that we're looking for. So they know that we're going to be looking at stuff like their drainage. We know we're going to be looking at traffic patterns, all those different things. And it's just right there. And I think it'll be easier. To change those, change the regulations to match up with them. So if we, we discover that there's issues, we're not dealing with traffic very well because. A certain use is developing too much traffic, but we're allowing it. It's a little easier for us to see it. So. It won't be a major thing. It's just not putting that out there right now. So I've got it out in the open. So that was a very, very quick run through of some of the proposals that I've come up with. Honestly, the plan, we don't want to have a ton of proposals in it. Because that's not what this document is. This document is not designed to be regulatory. It's designed to be a planning document. And so what we want in this section is just a little bit of guidance when we move on to the next process of looking over our regulations. Like what it, what it is that we want to see. Change to those regulations. A lot of it has to do with where things are, with management, all those kind of things, but also some of the uses that I've been talking about for the last twenty minutes or however long I've been talking. Though it's something that we want to talk about a little bit more in detail, probably in a future meeting, but. Unless somebody really has some burning thing they want to talk about that's related to our current regulations. And I know some of our newer members definitely have not had time and really, quite frankly, have not had access to the new regulations. I'm going to work on getting. The three of you copies of everything that we have. So that you can learn a little bit more about what we're doing. And then comprehend some plan of the current one. Obviously, we'll be part of that. So we'll get that to you. So we can talk about that in more detail, so that you're not just glazing over on me here. I'm sure some of my veterans are glazing over at this point, but. Another thing, before we go tonight, is I want to kind of continue on with other parts of this chat. One of the things that we did in two thousand and thirteen that had mixed, mixed results, but it was effective to a point to get a little bit of assistance in it, but. Partly due to staff. We have to take a little blame for that. And partly due to COVID, it's been really difficult. Throughout the whole process of developing this plan to get. Quality input from the community. We're going to still have to figure out a way to do it. The way we did it in two thousand and thirteen, again, kind of, we had mixed results. What we did was we sent out paper surveys. And the water bills. And we got somewhat decent response. But what we determined that was, became a problem after the fact was that a lot of renters. Don't pay their water bill, the landlords. And so those renters, they weren't getting the survey. Maybe the landlord got the survey and responded, that's great. But we're missing, missing what those residents were, and we've got landlords that own fifty or ninety minutes or even more. So they're, they're replying once and representing hundreds of people. So.
How is, how is the online zoning going? What's your participate, participation in that?
The, the one we're working on right now? Not well. We, we really struggled to get people to sign up for the service. We initially thought a great deal. People had the option to opt into it, and what we were doing was generating surveys periodically. We got approximately. Sending out a survey, and we were getting pretty decent response from the people that had signed up for it. But people that signed up were a low number. I think we're getting a hundred people responding to the survey. We have the city at twelve thousand people. So that is a representative sample of the community as well. So I guess what I'm asking of you is what do you think we should do as staff? And the planning commission to encourage people to. Give their opinion on this plan as a whole. Because I, I have it here in chapter eight, but I think we need to talk about how to deal with it for the entire. We got some pretty darn good response on housing. That's about it. We, we haven't, we haven't had a whole lot of input on much of anything else. Does anybody have? Seriously, just reaching out here. Any ideas on how we can get public more involved?
Participation is tough. It's a mindset of the community. Are we hundred percent sure that we're reaching out to everybody in the correct manner? I mean.
No, obviously not. I don't think we are. That's why.
So, so, so you don't, you don't think, you don't think it's necessarily participation? We're just not reaching out to enough people?
A little bit, honestly.
So if we reach out, if we reach out to everybody, we've kind of done our, our due diligence. We can't make.
But how do we?
Well, this meeting is an example. We had a public meeting, or a public project. And how many people from the public walked down here to give us any input about that thing? We have had public meetings before. And my, have one person. Show up to voice a comment about that one issue before the planning commission. And we have thirteen percent who show up to vote. And I think nothing is more important than a public meeting. But we live in a society that has. Pretty much given up their right to be up for it. They're willing to just fight back and let whatever happened, happened to them. And that is unconscionable, in my opinion, because of the Constitution of the United States that we take and owe to the bed.
Yeah, I agree with Lloyd. We, we've become apathetic, but as long as we're reaching out to everybody, I feel like we've done what we're supposed to.
I'm glad this meeting is recorded.
On the online surveys, I know I signed up. I don't remember getting like an email or something. There's a new survey out there.
What, what was the one someone did with this? Yes, we, yeah, we did the housing, because we use that as part of the contribution to our, to our. And the.
To be honest, yeah, we got some swamp trying to do it for the house, the Hyatt and all that, and then the hundred fifty. Killed me this summer, and I just didn't get back. But I always wanted to, but it's just.
But we're going to have to, yeah, we're going to have to get it out.
We do, I'm not saying we don't continue to use flash, but I think, you know, I've got to deal with the budget side, giving it a review, but. Some of that was something. Still don't know why. We tried. Derek Waller, we tried setting up a table, we're just talking to people in that. Fix bag, you know, I've, I'm going through all that. It's not really any different results of what we get in C I T forms, which we did just hold out as well.
If you have to fill out a paper or something there in town.
Yeah, it was a little, it was kind of simple. Like, what are you, what are your top three things you want to see? But it was, you know, street carts, you know, transportation and everything. And I got to tell you, I was one that sat there, Rex Smith spent a lot of time there, and Harrison Taylor was there both days, Friday, Saturday. You have to basically run people down, grab them, shake them, drag them over, and get them to do it. That's what it took. You can't just sit there and think, oh, yeah, you know, the city's here to, no, I mean, it is. It's a process, and I'm not good at that, so I let them. And. All the time, but I. Thankfully, Harrison and Rex tried it, but Harrison was kind of coaching people, we'll say.
Get right into that.
You know, so, you know, I'm a little questionable about the quality of the results in some respects, but again, it wasn't any shocking that we haven't already heard that before. I think as staff, we can do a pretty good job of, you know, distilling down everything we've gotten to this point, but there's specific things, I know you guys. We're developing these goals that we still need to try to get at. So, you know, I'd like to do a few more surveys, and if we do it, we need to make sure we've got it scheduled out. Do it and get them all prepared. That's kind of what killed us is that we would, we'd do one, we'd analyze, and then we'd look at what's the next one. But then you, you lose a few weeks, and then people just forget about it. So we'll have to do a big push. And make sure people were doing it, and we're asking about this, 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 and this. For the next four months, please sign up, and we're just kind of. Or maybe we just do it all in a span of, I don't know. If we're going to kind of lose interest, you know. And that's kind of what I think Josh is wanting to hear, you know, what's the approach. But at least on the transportation side, I've got to get all the input in the next. Few months at the latest. We really need to try to wrap that up by March. But, you know, here I was, I had all the great visions. We're going to come back in January, we're going to work with schools and then have. Public meetings are out the door right now, and everyone's going on, and everything's going on, so, you know, I just. They are working with the school district specifically to work with the building administrator, transportation department there, but. But we still might have something, or even parents, teachers, whoever's, you know, associated with the school community, at least for those areas, could speak about the challenges. And that doesn't say anything about all the other areas in town, you know, we have snarls and stuff, so. I don't know. It's kind of, it's definitely been a challenge.
Yeah, then you have to say, you know, we want this to put into the master plan. This is otherwise, say, I filled this out month after month. I saw nothing. I'm done. But I almost have to say, this is a long-term thing. Please help us update this document. A lot of them know, you're probably not going to see anything right away because they're gonna just kind of lose interest over it. And even if you get a thousand people on there, there are a lot of tendencies.
Yeah. Be fair to some of what even Lloyd was saying. Part of the reason that people have become apathetic is because they feel that government in general doesn't listen. And so that's part of why we want, I want anyways, to have as much public input as we possibly can get. So that people understand that, yes, we are truly trying to listen to what you have to say. Doesn't mean everything that we hear is gonna happen.
Well, just in the example of the gentleman who spoke to us. It popped him. And I had a grievance and was told to come to the commission with a grievance. And get told by the old man in the corner that the place that we can, we can help you. He would feel dirt to bring and put on. And.
And sadly, he.
And be like feeling that way because we can't, because of process, address his grievance. And even if we could address his grievance, this isn't the commission to do the reading. What they, all I can do is let the citizens here and if truly a simple matter, you need to take it up to that. So for second, the citizen, the people out there, they think that we are in here telling them to just go eat cake. That didn't work for the French and it sure won't work for us.
But I, I want to let you know that that is something that we care about as staff. Want to do everything we can to get as much input as we can. I think part of the issue is while everybody in here besides Andrew and I are citizens in general, not staff. That people think that you're just simply listening to what I'm saying and just taking it. And I hope that that never happens. I hope that your question may, when you disagree with me.
And you know what? I have a point.
I've ever posted on Arc City Ask Me. There's the stupidest crap on there, but it's gonna take days to process all of the info. So you put a basic question up there and the citizens are on Arc City Ask Me Answers. And they will give you days worth of information.
And they do.
And that is we're a so immediately driven society.
Right.
So you ask them in a pattern that's been done.
Done specifically.
Probably the next step.
And yes, I'm on Arc City Ask and Answer. And I give them direct replies to their questions and they get upset with that. So.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying in general.
Just a lot of feedback.
They'll give you tons of feedback and then you can just funnel through. Okay, so people are asking for a mountain.
Well, then you just take what you can.
Right. Obviously, and certainly. Only a small percentage, less than, less than fifty percent of the residents in this community.
Yeah, but people talk.
They do talk.
So tomorrow they're gonna say, hey, guess what was on Arc City? They're asking input.
Right.
You know, you followed up with, hey, reach out to Josh at the city. He wants to know your. You know, there's ways to.
I will say that we have to be careful as staff. Well, well, definitely what usually happens in that case is I don't respond. Because what happens is that means I'm speaking on behalf of the city commission or the city manager. I can't do that. I don't have the right to do that.
I can get, we have to be careful how we do it.
I'm just saying throw a blank question. I was like, what do you guys want in this? Stick with housing or traffic or whatever.
Apparently I can only get my, what the moderator wants to see.
Yeah, I agree. Like the surveys try to get people to sign up and they've got a lot of it or something. That's where they are. You get something?
I've not closed mine to do any of that.
Be with the.
Kill you.
And God, one time, if I ate those and picked up a phone call.
So he's, so he's asked, he's offering to put his phone number up.
That's what I just heard too.
I'm sorry, I will not put my, put my personal number on my page like that. I'm gonna work. I'll put my boss's number on there.
We'll get your WhatsApp button on your Facebook to follow your office.
And like we talked about before, when we were doing all the, you know, the work the city was doing was not, I think there's been less of that. But from the water leaks to the Boeing, what did the city do today? I think a lot of people, I know I, it was like, wow, they do a lot more stuff than I thought they did. Like, there's everything like they didn't fall right in front of my hat. I was like, well, look what they did today. They probably had higher priorities, just, just that.
Honestly, I've, even I discovered some stuff that I don't know. I don't know what they do on the databases because I'm working in an office.
Did a lot of stuff.
I know what they do, but I don't.
Yeah.
See.
We could ask a new manager who made tell the traveler, you know, paper for the city, right? That they could have a dedicated section for questions and answers.
They could. I, I think they, they tend to want that to be advertised, paid for advertising is what we're hearing.
They do, however, they do love stories that are city related. Like this, this meeting was an article in the paper today, I said. So they, in the right situation, they, they will actually reach out like that too.
And they're all a publisher, a newspaper, depending upon advertising to put ink on the paper and get it out in the street. And I have citizens in Arc City Ask Connectors saying, I'm not gonna support the local paper. I'm not gonna advertise. I'm not gonna surprise. I'm not gonna do beans with them. And that's just really, as a publisher, what you don't want to do. Write a letter to the editor and let them credit. Sign it. I'll let them print a letter that's not signed. But that's your community voice in your local newspaper. As much as we might like Arc City Ask Connectors, it's too much gone, it's done nothing. You get in the newspaper that's going to support your local economy. It's not going to do any good if you write to the editor of the Wichita Eagle. Cause less people read the Wichita Eagle in Arc City than the Courier Traveler.
Anyway.
Anyway. So I think we've heard your traveler is not popular, but it's the only local newspaper you have.
I wanted to talk about one more thing before we go this evening. And that, the future land use map. The future land use map is the basis for the zoning map. And what I did, and of course we develop, these have been developed since comprehensive plans were developed for the city. So we, we've had future land use maps, several versions throughout the years. And two thousand thirteen was no difference. We created a land use map that we still refer to. Like I did it tonight when we did the rezon case. I referred to that app that said that that particular property, we had planned for it to be a public use throughout the whole planet. And it was because that plan is ending. But we just changed it. We changed the zoning on it. And so now it doesn't actually match what the map did. And sadly, we've had to do that a couple other times. Public is a weird one. Because we've had several cases when something came out of public ownership that needed to be rezoned to, just because of that. The habitat on a property that had been public zoned, we did a reset, so we were gonna blow it, for instance. We also, well, actually, there has been one more reason for that. The one that is on what used to be Brock Park was a situation like that. So the future land use map is, it's again a guide. It's not the same thing. It's not regulatory. But it does help us see what is happening in the future. Obviously, we want to know where things are going to develop. So if we, we see, say, commercial development along a corridor, but we, we leave it as residential on this plan. We're, we're just ignoring the, the change, even if we don't like it's happening. We're, we're approving rezon, but we're not changing the plan. Now, I'm not saying we're doing that. But what I'm saying is the idea is to not do that. And I think for the most part, when we do a rezon, we look at those kind of things. Honestly, I try to filter out rezones before they ever get to this point by looking at the future land use map to say, that's not. It's not going to work. It's in the middle of a residential area. You can't have factories in the middle, whatever. So some of that gets stopped for an emergency.
And using the issue we just addressed, not if we, I'm going to double clarify for this. If we had looked at the whole neighborhood as commercial use rather than residential use. We would have opened up a big can of worms for the homeowners that we couldn't afford to take. Oh, okay. I'm saying we did the right thing from building. But there's so much, there's only so little and so much you can do with surrounding neighborhoods looking forward and planning. Unless you have. Portion of wrecked neighborhood. And we've talked about that in previous meetings because some of the lots, you just can't build a building on the lot that is destroyed by a fire.
Right, because then we, then we end up having to do what we did a couple months ago. Where we issued a variance. Because the lot's too small. So, yeah.
We talked about fixing what we have and worry less about expanding.
So part of what, part of what I did today was I, this map, it looks funny because what I did was I washed out the background, which was the current. And I put it bold, as well as I tried, to show where I think that it's changed. There's been a number of places around the city that, that have changed since we did this plan.
Just doesn't quite match up.
Part of the issue, kind of going over to the growth area side. Part of the issue was what we did when we adopted this plan was we looked at the two thousand seven corridor study for US seven seven. Because quite frankly, there's areas of that corridor that we're just guessing what's, what's going on there. Well, some of it is probably pie in the sky. There was a lot of stuff on there that was commercial that probably shouldn't have been. And we just kind of took it. And so part of what I'm proposing to do is back off from that plan. Let that be less of an influence on us because, well, quite frankly, it's a fifteen year old. It's out of date. And kind of look more about what's actually happening. To make sure that our plan matches what's actually happening. So on the, in the growth area, there was quite a bit of areas that were this large swaths of residential that was, you know, I guess it was going to be new subdivisions or whatever. The problem with subdivisions is what I talked about earlier, that with infrastructure. You gotta have the infrastructure first. So if infrastructure is not there, it's gonna stay. In, in this case, on that north corridor, that big green swat is gonna stay. Slowly, yeah, we hope that we have development. It's just, we want to grow. Uh, but we need to do it responsibly. And so some of those areas, that's what it was, is we're just changing it. I'm just proposing that we change it to match what's actually happening. So that the north thing, that's pretty much all that's changed. Now, when you get closer to Creekstone, I'm changing that because Creekstone has expanded a lot. Since this plan was done, they've actually expanded to areas that aren't even inside the city limits. To the west is that big purple thing off to the west of their site. Is one that they've been planned for, but it's probably down the future. But it's probably gonna be industrial. And on the east, they have that kind of parking area where they, they park some of their trailers while they're waiting for, for the next shipment. And they have kind of changed how that's working. It was commercial on this plan. And I don't know what was gonna ever develop commercial there because it's not on the highway. It's on sixty first road. Industrial is bottom line. So I propose that we change that up there. And then the only other really change that, well, I guess I changed the countryside to residential. Because I'm proposing that we don't have countryside anymore. But still. The only other thing I changed on this map, the growth area map, was down in IXL area. There was a whole area of mixed use. Kind of in that intersection around what mostly call Axle Road, three twenty second. But the problem with that area developing commercial is it's, it's too far away from the city and it's too close to the casino. And so I, I have a plan for just what I'm seeing. I don't anticipate that there's gonna be much commercial development in the IXL area because of those two influencing factors. Their commercial property tends to want to be inside the city limits. Or, and they don't want a lot of competition from other places south of the border. It's just causing enough that probably the only thing that would develop there is going to be something like a gas station. There's just not market for it down there. They're gonna be, they're gonna want to beat the limits since they're gonna bring it in. So I propose, we just referred that into the surrounding as residential and.
We need to be careful about expansion when we still don't have residents.
Yeah.
City utilities. So have residents who don't have sewer in their homes and probably take care of that stuff. Look at fixing that first, in my opinion.
And this wasn't about expanding the city. This is just showing what is happening outside of the city. Kind of developed. That's all I was attempting to do with my changes here. Now, inside the city, and I'm going, going back and forth. Inside the city, there's several areas that have changed over time. Of course, there are Creekstone has expanded. So that's just reflecting what's happened there. We did a whole lot of mixed use besides the corridor we talked about earlier. It's just not really done what we thought it was going to do. West Radio Lane. Part of that probably needs to stay as mixed use, but part of it needs to go back to residential because it's, it's just, it's not doing what we thought it was gonna do. Certainly, the areas around Presbyterian Manor and closer to the clinic, there's a chance that more of that will develop. I reached out to the hospital. I reached out to Jeff Bowman's hospital to ask if he thought there would be any expansion for the Arc City Clinic. And he indicated that's not really something they're looking at right now. They don't actually own the clinic. It's, it's owned by the doctors. They're just, the hospital's just leasing it. So they don't have immediate plans to do that. They're actually, we talked about this when Jeff was here a couple months ago. Their sites are more set for the campus where the hospital is. And so probably not going to be a whole lot of expansion there, but there's still the chance that there'll be a little bit of commercial on that corridor. That's why I suggest that we don't touch that. The other mixed use area that I changed on here is along East Kansas. Part of that, because we did a rezone to commercial for the, for the truck stop that we're still waiting on. So we've changed a huge chunk of that area to commercial anyways. And because most of it is in the floodplain, it's extremely hard to develop housing. It's not possible. But with that truck stop doesn't end up going in there, it's gonna be really hard to get residential right next to it. So I just propose that we change that to commercial. Beyond that, the, there's one more mixed use. There's some other changes on here, but they're little minor things. they're little minor things that have to do with just the question. There's another mixed use district that we have on the zoning map even in the southwest part of the city. And the reason we proposed that two thousand thirteen was we thought that the bypass that got built was going to influence what was going on in that area. Well, we're sitting on eight years later and I hope they're having the bypass. David Kado has, just keeps pushing it off their list. So. It's probably not reasonable to expect that to go in. If it doesn't go in, the land use pattern of that neighborhood is probably gonna remain residential anyways. Some of it's for my act, actually. So I just propose that we move that back to more of a residential area to reflect what's actually happening there. And I worry too, that if we, we leave that a mixed use, that some of those residents are going to be experiencing some development that they don't really want. They weren't a part of discussion to, to that.
Yeah, let's not make the same mistake we did on, on Summit Street there.
Yes.
It feels done in the past.
So I would propose that we just take that back to residential. We, we have an avenue for change. Obviously, we, we did that today. We had somebody that came in, presented a proposal to us. To change the zoning on a property and ultimately we voted to recommend approval. So it, it can happen. Obviously, we can deny it too. They, they, there's a means to change the land use pattern from what this map is because this, I can't. So with that, I've talked way too much today. Does anybody have any pressing thing they want to add? Ian?
Uh, no, I just want to welcome the new members. Thank you for participating and forgive me for my, uh, lack of presence. That's a lot of information to digest, that's for sure. So.
Yeah, it's not my day.
I have to. Major. Thanks to the new guys for coming aboard. I know it's hard to get to the house. Thanks for stepping up.
Absolutely. Thank you for being willing to, to join us. We were a little worried that we would not be able to have meetings. If anybody was, for whatever reason, couldn't attend. So I thank you all for.
Please. Come over here.
Say.
All right, motion's been made to adjourn. So, uh, is that it, Josh? You done?
That's it. Does anybody object?
All right. Meeting adjourned. How's that?